All right, good evening. We'll call the meeting to order, please, with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Hello?
Yes.
Odie?
Yes.
Saxor? Disconnected? Scott?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellie, are you present?
I am present. My apologies.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver request tonight, and I don't believe there's any community input tonight. That takes us to our first item under General Business. Under Oral Reports, we have a good news report from the Brandon Valley High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Paula. I'm one of the Associate Principals at Brandon Valley High School, and it's my pleasure to talk about some of the things that we've been doing at the high school, some continued things, some traditions that have been set, but how that has looked this year. To start, I wanted to share with kind of an insignia logo that we have kind of incorporated, the Lead, Learn, and Serve. It's not unique to the high school. When the addition was built, Dr. Talcott had put that on as people walk out the building, but we've taken that, and now you can find that in our offices, from Mr. Schlecke, Ms. Moore, and myself. Just kind of remind us why we're here. Goes along with the vision of the graduate. Specifically, what tonight we want to talk about service. And again, I want to commend Mr. Schlecke for kind of laying that down, that groundwork from his time as a teacher, all the way forward, and we've kind of followed suit with that and some of the things that we're doing. So with that, we'll move along. To start, per tradition, our tradition of giving during homecoming, for example, in the two years that I've been here, last year it was the food pantry, collected items for that, got the elementaries involved, some of the paper goods, things like that. This year, after kind of going back and forth on what to do, we landed on the Veterans Community Project. It's been a very interesting project to get involved with. It's led by an alum, Brandon Valley alum circa 2001, so it's been fun to get involved with. We did have a goal of reaching $10,000, and pleasantly surprised, we've gotten $5,000 so far. So it's pretty fun to cut a check for $5,000, and that's largely from our students. Culminated, kind of our biggest fundraiser was collecting in our English classes, trying to identify something that most of our students would be involved with, and English was one of those classes, and they competed against one another. And then again, the class that collected the most in that kind of penny and dollar drive got to Pi Administration in the face. I think Mr. Frecking probably handled that the best, given the lack of hair up top, but we can all aspire to that at some point. But a fun event, and we were able to recognize that at an assembly during that homecoming week. Again, it's a pretty cool deal. Some students contributed hundreds of dollars because it was, they had some sort of connection to the project, felt passionate about it, so it was very cool to see that come to fruition. And then when we were at the games that week, be it soccer, or soccer volleyball, or football, our students were collecting at the doors. They went up and down the bleachers to collect, and it was kind of fun to see opposing schools also got involved with that. Again, when you have a vision like this, everyone can rally behind that, and so it was fun to be able to do that. We have aspirations through our community outreach with Mr. Brady Olson, how we can expand on that, thinking of like Veterans Day assemblies, tours, that sort of thing. How can this be an ongoing process? And where we landed with that $10,000, that's the ongoing cost to maintain one of those homes. Just refurnishing all the items such as bedding, pillows, any tools of the trade. If they want to do carpentry, they'll buy some of those tools for the individual, so $10,000 replenishes that. All the homes were spoken for at that time. Rumor has it they're building more and trying to find more land because it is such a popular program. We thought it'd be cool to be involved with that, kind of that ongoing piece and what Brandon could do with that. Again, our elementaries are on board, so it's kind of fun to see that come to fruition, and that's an ongoing process throughout the year, so hopefully we can get there. So, that's the Veterans Community Project. Another big one, an annual project is the Angel Tree Gift Wrapping. And again, I want to give a huge shout out to Michelle Stemwaddle and also Secretary Jessica Hanson, hugely involved in this process. It takes a significant amount of coordination, communicating with families, be it collecting items, but then also taking that information and then getting it out to those that want to donate. Gone are the days. It goes so quickly. We don't even have to put them on the tree anymore for people to come and take. People just reach out saying, "I want one family, I want two families," whatever that looks like. So all in all, we ended up doing 326 gifts wrapped, and it was a pretty cool event to see. We pick a Saturday, and the hallway was lined with individuals. We have wrapping paper everywhere, but we had 35-plus students. My children were running around because they wanted to be involved. It was a pretty neat event, and it's amazing what you can do in a short amount of time. I'll admit, my wrapping skills did not improve as the day went on, but there's always next year. So, again, just with that, again, a tremendous shout out to Michelle, but also Jessica for all of the work that she does behind the scenes, kind of the unsung hero of that, but then also our student council. They take the lead on that. It's always one of those things. It's great, but we have space constraints, all that, a lot of things that we can build upon year after year. So, those are a couple of big things that we do, but the next one is kind of student-centered. So we're going to go into Hope Squad, and for that, I'm going to bring up Michelle Stemwaddle and Mrs. Moore, and they're going to talk about kind of what that looks like.
Quite as tall as Mr. Paula. So Hope Squad is new this year. It's something that a parent from a former district had brought to me, and it's amazing. The whole idea of Hope Squad is to have peer-to-peer interaction that's going to promote some positive interactions in our building. It is about mental health awareness, but to me, it's about so much more. So I use this picture. I don't know if it's the one Hope Squad would use to start a presentation, but it's the one that I think is the best symbol of what I want Hope Squad to be here in our building, and that's just students helping other students, whether that's just sitting down and listening, whether that's recognizing some mental health awareness that they, we've given them some skills for things to recognize they didn't recognize before, or if it's creating some service projects on their own so that we can help in our building and then also beyond. So, one of the things with Hope Squad is that all the students that are in Hope Squad, they will get QPR training, which is question, persuade, and respond. And the way Hope Squad presents it, it's just kind of like CPR. You know, we know CPR. We know to help someone until a professional can arrive, and that's what I want these students to be able to do in our building. Help someone, help your peer until a professional can get there and take over. And then my goal and my hope for them is to be able to leave our school, go off into college, to their workplace, whatever it is, and then they can take those skills with them and help even more people than just Brandon. So, that's kind of Hope Squad in a nutshell, and we just have some really great kids. So this is, I'll look down here. I just kind of wanted to show you the national goal, and then, of course, the link's way is to take what we should do and do it a little bit better, is what I think. So that top one is the national goal, but the BVHS goal is to harness the power of positive peer intervention to promote hope in our hallways. And so that's really our goal. We're going to have some students come up and talk about what they've done so far, and because of the snow, we've lost a few meetings already, but we do have plans to do some more. You guys want to come up and talk about what we've done?
Okay, so I'm Megan Erconan. I'm a senior at the high school. And our first little project that we did, obviously, like Mrs. Stemwaddle said, the weather was kind of not on our side, but we really wanted to do something during semester test week. Just as students, Tristan and I know, it's a very stressful time, and I'm sure a lot of you guys' parents know too. And just because of the weather, all the mist days, everyone was kind of freaking out. And so we just knew that we needed to do something, just to bring a little bit more hope into our hallways, kind of lighten the mood a little bit. And so what we did is we decided to do just like little sticky notes and notes all around the school. So there's our little station. And us as Hope Squad members, we just came in, wrote a ton of like inspirational stuff, I guess, just like pretty simple sometimes, even just like a "you got it," and we passed around candy. And so we either gave these notes to people personally, or we just put them on the lockers, doors, basically anywhere you can see in the school. So they were pretty much everywhere, just because we wanted to make sure that like the students knew, like even during this stressful time, like, "We're here for you to like help you and, you know, just kind of bring you up, and even though it is a stressful time, like, it's going to be okay." And so we just really want to, even through like little projects just like this, yeah, just bring hope back into our hallways, so.
All right, all right. Hi, my name is Tristan Visby, again, senior at the high school, and I'm going to kind of talk about future plans for we have, because obviously we haven't had a lot of time to do so. This year, one of the major plans we're thinking of is Hope Week. Again, we did this last year, and last year it was good. We had a lot of positive impact, but this year we want it to be more centralized. We want it to be more focused, kind of have a base to build it upon, and I think Hope Squad will help kind of build that up. And so what that Hope Week will look like is still yet to be decided, but just kind of a week to help kids. At the end of the school year, it happens in late spring. It's definitely one of, if not the hardest time of the year for kids. Tests get harder. You have to get ready for finals. As you know, Midwest weather isn't always the best in April, and so that week is just kind of gives some kids something to look forward to, a lot like Homecoming Week, where you have, oh, at the end of this week, we have something big to look forward to. That's kind of what we hope to, kind of hope to give kids that same sense, like we have something to look forward to. It's a long stretch to the end of the year, and so, you know, kind of just reiterate what they have already said, like, we just want to help bring the atmosphere and the mental health of people who, and kids, students, and sometimes teachers even, that are struggling to get through the year, because it is hard. It's a lot of work, and just any way we can just to make that a little better for them, I think is something definitely that we are looking forward to in the future.
So I don't know that I have a lot to add to that, other than, you know, when I arrived in Brandon Valley and, you know, realized the culture of service here, you know, I was thinking, you know, how can we do more? How can we be better? And, you know, just it's the people that keep building on that, and it kind of fuels the next thing, and people coming together and caring, and that is really a powerful thing. And what I'm seeing is, you know, small acts, but big impact. And I'm just amazed at the people around me who are willing to step up and go above and beyond what they're required to do, you know, just be along the ride here for Michelle Stemwaddle and our wonderful student council and administration and staff. It just amazes me every day. So I want to thank those people and very grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for our group?
Mr. Stemwaddle? Has the training, the, help me? Help me with the Q, QL, what's it again? QPR, has that training been conducted yet?
Not yet.
Scheduled to be conducted?
Well, it's been scheduled a couple times. I mean, I'll be honest with you.
Somebody keeps calling school officer.
It'll be probably mid-February is what we're hoping for.
Awesome.
But it has snowed every time we've had a meeting, so if February 2nd, it's our fault.
Thank you.
You bet.
I've got a question. How big is your, are your group of kids that you have involved?
For Hope Squad?
Yes.
Yeah, we have 30 students, and they were selected by their peers, which I probably should have shared. So, all the English teachers gave their students throughout 9/12 just a sheet of paper that said, "List three people that you trust, that you think is a positive influence in our building, and that you would go to if you had a problem or if you had a comment, or if you were too afraid to talk to an adult in the building." And then I compiled, they just wrote down three names, and then I compiled those names, and then that's how we developed our Hope Squad, so, chosen by their peers.
My question would be for the Lead, Learn, and Serve, the veteran fundraising and the Angel Tree. Do you have groups that will match, so to say, and, I mean, are you starting this? You said you're more or less for Homecoming Week. Are you doing, obviously, you're doing that now, prior to, or continue throughout the year, so?
Yep, great question. So, the only one, we have had outside community members, after the story was run, Kelloland, I believe, and then there was a bit in the paper, outside community members contributed to that, not so much matching funds. The Legion in Valley Springs expressed interest, and they were going to drop off a check. I don't know the status of that, or how much, or anything like that, but in terms of a matching standpoint, I can actually kind of speak to that. Our student council actually kind of matched it within itself. They very willingly wanted to take what the students raised and then say, "Well, what about this amount?" We kind of came in, say, well, kind of facilitated that conversation. They said, "Well, why don't we just match the whole thing?" So that's kind of how we got to that. Roughly, you know, they raised, let's say, $2,000, and then they wanted to match that, coupled with some other funds that we had, were pretty impactful. And that, we didn't think it would be that high in terms of what we were going to contribute, but it was really kind of a no-brainer for the students. It was very overwhelming and unanimous that they wanted to contribute, which is pretty cool. So to say it was matched, I absolutely think so, and it was our students that did it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's exciting to see what goes on in our schools, and we all need that positivity and appreciate it very much, so, thank you. All right, next, Administration Report, Superintendent Larson.
Attempting to follow that up is going to kind of be like attempting to follow up Brady Olson's midterm commencement speech about trees. I don't know if that's recorded or not, but before I get into my superintendent's report, if it is recorded and out there on YouTube, I would encourage everyone to go watch his mid-year commencement speech. It was absolutely incredible. So, again, put in the impossible position of trying to follow up amazing, and I will do my best, but likely fail miserably. Superintendent's report, I just want to connect on a number of items here. The Navigator CO2 Pipeline, our application for party status has been submitted and approved. At this point in time, I tell you that party status provides us information, communication, and opportunity to comment. At this point in time, we are neither a proponent nor an opponent of the proposed pipeline, but we do continue to receive the communications in terms of timeline and meeting agendas and all of those types of communications as a successful party status. Superintendent Evaluation has previously been discussed, but it is outlined for your review. Budget process, again, we've had this conversation previously within the superintendent's report. The presentation of the five-year plan will be coming here next month, and then I would note that in March, we'll look at approving the new staffing positions, as well as the preliminary capital outlay budget will be presented and approved, and we talk about how that's necessary for those large-ticket expenditures that require procurement processes to be followed. Those respective large expenditures dictate exactly how much of the capital outlay budget you're able to do or not do, so critically important to get that done in a timely manner. Then you'll receive a preliminary budget presentation in May, with a hearing in July with potential action. Would note, there is no school February 17th or Monday, the 20th for President's Day break. We will have parent-teacher conferences on March 13th and 14th, and there is no school on March 17th due to the comp day. March 31st will be an in-service day. On that day, we will have Hamish Brewer, he's a motivational speaker, come in and speak to both our certified and classified staff. Would note that our classified staff, in addition to experiencing Hamish Brewer, they will also have a couple of various training sessions for a half-a-day training in totality. Certified staff will participate with Hamish Brewer and then also within their CLCs. High school addition, no change to schedule priorities or respective information there. Have a couple of images just to update you on. Exterior masonry work is in progress. You can see Area B, the exterior masonry work is complete. This is inside of Area A. This would actually be a small conference room located between two classrooms. There's actually two conference rooms on either side of the classroom entrances, but that's the door frame, window frame for that respective conference room in Area A. This is a future classroom. As you can see, steel studs are out, and then the interior construction begins. Again, Area A. Additional image, Area A classroom. Area B, the sheathing is in process, so structural steel's up, steel studs are up, and now they're in the process of sheathing as well as putting on the roof in Area B. Another image of sheathing. This is Area B as well, so this would be a future classroom. Again, you can see the structural steel's in place, the roof is on, and the steel stud construction is in process. Area C, structural steel is ongoing. Would anticipate that structural steel in Area C being wrapped up here in the near future, and then they will be working on the steel stud process. The steel studs, they've laid the base track for that, but the structural steel has to be finished for the steel stud guy to get in there and wrap that up. Again, Area C, steel stud construction in progress. With that, Madam Chair, would certainly entertain any questions that the Board has at this time?
Quite impressed with the construction, obviously, with the snow days. I drove by, and they're still out there working, so I know how hard construction guys work. Is there any talk on, has it slowed progress down? They're not too worried, I'm sure, but...
Yeah, at this moment in time, I would tell you, there is no option for anything other than the date outlined within the contract with the general contractor. It will be done and ready to roll for the fall.
Any other questions for Superintendent Larson tonight? Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Next, we have Board Policy. There are two items there up for adoption, AFC and JBA. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our General Business Items. Item number one, to approve the 2023-24 academic calendar.
Madam Chair, prior meeting, we went through the calendar month by month. Would certainly recommend approval at this point in time.
I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, item number two, the 2022-2023 State of the Schools address. There will be no action on this one.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. The State of the Schools address is generally provided in the late fall. We had some accountability, report card data challenges that they had to work through, so that was why it was slightly delayed. And then in addition to that, I wanted to allow a little bit more time to go by and then also sneak in just a budget preview for FY '24, as we're going to start to have a lot of those conversations here in the coming months. So, want to just provide a 30,000-foot view of the district and really where we're at. When we talk about school academic accountability, I think it's very important for you as a board to know and understand that it's not just accountability to the public, but rather it's about the impact on the process of student learning, and that our ultimate goal is to have improved student outcomes through our processes. So, just a couple of visuals that outline really the processes that we as a district follow, and I would point to the image on the right. When we talk about our holistic process internally, we talk about, you know, you start with curriculum instructional planning and design. We have our informative assessment that our teachers utilize to create data-driven instruction, ultimately leading to our state assessment in the spring. And then once we receive those respective results, we review those results. We reflect on those results and our practices, and then ultimately, the process all starts over again, again, with the very, very specific purpose of improving student learning and improving academic performance. So, our school performance index, which ultimately determines your SPI score, is determined in the following way at the high school level and respectively at the elementary and middle school level. I would note, there are no SPI scores reported in this year's report card. However, school support designations are reported. Brandon Elementary and Inspiration Elementary, both are identified as targeted support, as you were previously informed, and that was due to subgroup attendance issues. So, I am proud to tell you that the South Dakota Department of Education is bringing together a work group to evaluate the school performance index and how they determine those various things, and our Assistant Principal at the intermediate school, who also serves as our assessment coordinator, Mr. Rick Pearson, has been asked to be on that group. So, very proud of him and the work that he's done in the realm of assessment, and that invitation also speaks to how his work is perceived out at the Department of Education. So, very excited to have one of our administrative team members involved in that work at the department level, as we're able to know all of the ins and outs in terms of the SPI. So, 30,000-foot view in terms of academic performance, elementary ELA and math performance. What I'll run through is a number of slides that just simply show the Brandon Valley School District and then also the state of South Dakota. So, when we talk about elementary ELA and math, that is grades III and grades IV. So, in terms of ELA, 74% of Brandon Valley 3rd and 4th graders are proficient or advanced in ELA, and 72% in mathematics. 5th and 6th grade, or at our intermediate school level, 69% of our 5th and 6th graders are proficient or advanced in ELA, 57% in mathematics. At the middle school level, or grades VII and VIII, 70.5% of Brandon Valley middle schoolers were proficient or advanced in ELA, 56% were proficient or advanced in mathematics. High school ELA and math. 81% of Brandon Valley High School 11th graders, so that's who we're talking about here when we talk about high school and the world of the state assessment, 81% proficient or advanced in ELA, 70% proficient or advanced in mathematics. Our English language learner progress, this is the percentage of ELL students on track to exit EL programming on time. 35% in the Brandon Valley School District are on track to exit on time, 32% in the state of South Dakota. ACT data is something we also evaluate very carefully. I would tell you that we have performed extremely well as a school district in the ACT arena, the state of South Dakota. The state of South Dakota also in general performs pretty well in terms of the ACT in comparison to the country. So there, when you take a look at the composite score, you can see how well our students are performing on the ACT, and that is certainly a credit to all of the work done by our respective building levels, preparing them with a robust and rigorous curriculum, all while providing high-quality instructional strategies equate to these types of success. Graduation rate and completer rate. So the first one to the left, when we look on the left side, it says four-year cohort, or that's on-time graduation. 94% of our Brandon Valley students in our last report card year graduated on time. And then when we talk about high school completion, that's the individuals, that's referencing those 94% plus the other kiddos that need that additional semester or that additional year. They get to count as completers, but they don't go into your four-year cohort rates. So 98% Brandon Valley High School students were completers. So we've heard it before and we're going to hear it again. Be proud, not satisfied. Be extremely proud. When taking a look at our student achievement data for this year, it is truly remarkable the quality of work done by our staff. When we think about the year that they had in terms of navigating the pandemic, being in-person learning was critically important for us. And I think that when you hear about, read about, and learn about the conversation about learning loss across our country and some of the tragic situations in terms of student achievement that many other places are facing, we happen to not be in that situation because of prioritizing in-person learning and our staff's willingness to be here, show up, do the hard work with instructing our kids throughout all of that difficult situation. And it equated to, quite frankly, outstanding results. Overall, there are a few areas that maybe aren't better than they were last year, but overall, when we take a look at this year's student achievement data, it is outstanding and as good as it's ever been, if not better. One data point that I put my thumb on very, very carefully is that elementary ELA data point. Generally speaking, the body of research has indicated that if you can get a kiddo reading proficiently by the time they exit elementary school, that is indicative of future success forever. So that is a data point that we hold very, very firmly under our thumb as a foundational principle. So when I saw that 3rd grade ELA score was right there at that 70, just above 70%, I believe, I was very, very impressed with that outcome. So overall, student achievement data, very, very impressed, very, very proud. However, not satisfied. We will continue to evaluate the data and drive forward in terms of improving student outcomes. Facilities update, just a real high-level glance at our current facility enrollments in addition to our capacities. So I would point specifically to Robert Bennett Elementary. We have 556 kiddos at Robert Bennett Elementary currently with a capacity of 600. And the reason I point to that is that's going to lead into the next conversation about the upcoming construction projects. So that's the building that we see as inching towards capacity issues that we have to alleviate. The other item that I would note is we have an established distance learning academy here at Brandon Valley. The established distance learning academy will dissolve at the end of this school year. So we will no longer have K-12 distance learning academy. However, what we will do is we will, through our respective buildings, if there is an individual that is best served through distance learning or South Dakota Virtual Schools, it'll be necessary for them to work directly with that administration. And it still may be an option, but it is not going to be an open option, for lack of a better phrase. Systemically, we will be removing them from our K-12 structure, our educational structure, which is important to the Department of Ed, probably not quite as important to folks out there. But we will be removing them from our structure in terms of educational structure. If we have a distance learner, they will be routed directly through the high school or the middle school. So there were 32 students in that program currently broke out for your respective review. So current and upcoming construction projects. You guys obviously are well aware of the high school classroom addition project started last spring, under construction throughout this entire school year, will be complete this summer, and will be utilizing it next school year. The project that is planned for, or what's next, the project that is planned is our East Side Elementary School. I would tell you that we are in just a real, real high-level preliminary planning and design right now. That will ramp up here in the coming months as we engage an architect and begin working through that process. Will certainly involve our Board Buildings and Grounds Committee once we get to an appropriate point here a little bit later this spring for those respective conversations. The project, we are anticipating bidding that in November or December. For those of you that have been on the Board a long time and have built a lot of schools, you're probably thinking to yourself, that's a few months sooner than we normally bid or would have regularly bid. In conversation with our architect as well as folks in the construction arena, we're needing to bid a little bit sooner so that we can get many of those products in hand, structural steel, all of those respective items in hand so we're able to start on time because the lead time is a little bit longer given the current state of the market. Construction will begin in the spring of 2024. That facility will be under construction for the entirety of the '24-'25 school year with that project being complete in the fall, ultimately when school will open in the fall of 2025 for the '25-'26 school year. What's that?
Not the old one, right?
Strategic plan, just I wanted to provide a real high-level review of our strategic plan. Our strategic plan encompasses five respective areas, and each of those areas are broke down into two different components. So ultimately, student achievement, staff development, facilities and operations, fiscal responsibility, and parent-community relations outline our strategic plan. I cannot reinforce enough to the Board of Education how important and vital our strategic plan is to our day-to-day operations. And I would lean into what you heard earlier tonight with our Lead, Learn, Serve concept and the things that administratively are projects and programs that are pushed and created, and also our classrooms. It really provides a very clear direction and very clear vision in terms of what is expected and wanted out of the Board of Education as well as our community for our schools to create. So critically important. We'll get into student achievement. Again, want to provide relevant and rigorous academics grounded in best practices. And the two areas that we've outlined are academic excellence and character development. And these are just a few of the items that we would lean into in terms of action strategies that ultimately lead to our success. Cannot say enough about the district reading protocol that has been established for a long time in the Brandon Valley School District. It's critically important and directly aligned to your strategic plan. And that's something that is old, that we have maintained and is aligned to our strategic plan. And then I would shift you to the bottom item, which is the $200,000 robotics grant that we just received. That is directly aligned to our STEM priority that is outlined within our strategic plan, and that just happened. So when the Director of Instruction comes in and says, hey, we're considering doing this, it is like, absolutely, that is directly aligned to our strategic plan, please pursue it. So that's an example of how your strategic plan guides day-to-day decisions, programs, and priorities. And then obviously, the character development, the tradition of giving as we previously referenced here this evening. Staff development. Your strategic plan outlines that you want to support highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. And I'm not going to go into great detail on all of the items that we have done within the strategic plan in the area of staff development, but I do want to lean into CLCs. Our collaborative learning communities are ultimately a project, program, or approach to professional development that was the result of our BV Listen survey and the feedback we received from our teachers in terms of needing additional time to collaborate, not only at the grade level or content level, but at the building and district level. So again, your strategic plan, in which you have outlined, directly guided and provided the vision for those respective items. Facilities and operations. We want to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. Again, we've outlined quality facilities as well as growth management within our strategic plan. BV Vision 2040, obviously a huge component of that in addition to all of the practical ways that we are managing our facilities and our operations. Fiscal responsibility. Again, as outlined within your strategic plan, you want to practice effective, efficient, and sustainable business practices. And these are all items that are annual items that again are directly aligned to our strategic plan. Within our strategic plan, we also note our fund balance approach. We are very, very, very cognizant of our fund balance and managing that effectively to maximize what we're able to do for staff and students. So again, your strategic plan outlines what you want us to do, and it provides us very clear direction in terms of our day-to-day decisions and helps guide us in that way. Parent-community relations, again, fifth component of our strategic plan. We want to strengthen school, family, and community engagement. We do that in a number of ways. Special projects, you know, when we talk about some of the things that we have done when we start to have conversations around special projects, if they directly align to our strategic plan in this realm, they're very easy to rally behind. The Coffee Bean was an example. Our project that our high school student council did that we already heard about tonight in reference, another example. Career Fair, I know that we're doing another rendition of our post-secondary or planning, career planning fair in conjunction with parent-teacher conferences. Our internship development, that is another program that is taking off and only growing and again because we want to strengthen school, family, and community engagement. So far more strategies than are listed here for your review, but it's important to know that that guidance is critically important. With that, we are in our final year of our five-year strategic plan that was ultimately launched in 2018. So we will work through a review and update process. Just wanted to provide you with a little bit of an overview in terms of timeline. Here this fall, we'll kick out a community survey that will be open to not just the community, but our staff, our families, all of those folks. And then in addition to that, we will engage with our respective focus groups. So we utilize focus groups with the certified staff, with the administrative staff, with the classified staff, our PTAs and PTO services focus groups through that process. And then we will have an open public meeting, not the Board, but just an open public strategic planning meeting that all are welcome to attend. And then ultimately, look for Board approval in the spring of 2024, and then we'll communicate that updated strategic plan to our patrons following. So with that, I do want to just provide you with a couple of comments in terms of what we have upcoming in terms of our budget situation. So it's really important to note, and I am extremely proud and would not change a thing in terms of our utilization of ESAR funds, one, two, or three. We did a phenomenal job of supporting our current staff through some extra paid days for planning when we were going through the distance learning component. We did some things with support staff. We did some things with technology at the elementary level. We've done things with transportation and operations. In addition to that, we have poured some dollars into staffing for this year. I can't tell you the exact percentage breakdown of what percent we spent on current or existing staff, new staff, operations, transportation, all of those things. I can't do that off the top of my head. What I can tell you is we did a great job of balancing that. You're going to hear about places that gave no dollars to their staff and are spending the money only on a construction project. Or you're going to hear folks that, you know, spend only dollars on operational costs or capital outlay expenses and no money on support personnel. So what I would tell you is I believe we did a phenomenal job of utilizing our ESAR funds in a multitude of ways that were appropriate and supported our students and our staff over the course of the last few years. Couldn't be more proud of the way that we spent those respective dollars. With that being said, we spent about a million bucks this year on staff. So that is a million dollars in staff that are supported this year that will not be supported by ESAR funds for next year. Okay? So those dollars, if you were to keep every single one of those positions, all of those funds have to go to the general fund. Okay? We will not keep all of those positions. We are prioritizing, we're currently in the process of evaluating all of those respective positions. Our counselors at the high school, middle, and intermediate school level, they will be prioritized. Our class-size reduction teachers will be prioritized. What am I forgetting? There's a Tier Two support staff member that we piloted that would be supported. Student Health Services has an individual position that would be supported. Our reading interventionists, at this point in time, it will be a recommendation to not continue with that program. And I will be meeting with them here in the near future to inform them of that. I believe we'll be able to maintain them with a level of employment, but it will not be in that capacity. My point is, you are going to be taking a chunk of currently funded staff members that are being paid for out of the federal ESAR funds, and they will be shifted to the general fund, to the tune of about $600,000. Okay? So that's a chunk, and it's important to just know that that's what we're working with. The other piece is our student enrollment this fall did not come in as high as projected, which is also a factor in terms of not just dollars that you got for this year to work with, but also for ongoing dollars for next year. So those are two major components of what we are evaluating in terms of budget preparations for next year, and they are big pieces to the puzzle. Those two big items, in addition to all of the other annual budgetary impacts that are question marks. Mr. Lundberg would remind me that we got to wait until the Summit League tournament to hear about our health insurance increase. There's a number of those types of things that are also unknown that will come into play. But it was certainly relevant to give you a little bit of a preview and just a comment prior to the five-year plan even, that these are two situations or two items that will be included in our upcoming budget that are certainly items to be... that will be included in our upcoming budget that are certainly items to be cognizant and aware of, yes. Undoubtedly, we will be able to do what we need to do and manage the situation, but they are factors as we move forward. So with that, would certainly entertain any questions that you may have. Ms. Sacks, for any questions?
Thank you. It's just a lot to digest, so I'm sure you'll get some questions from us at some point. But thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. All right, general business items, three and four, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 18 as presented, please.
That's a motion.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Number 19 is there for information only. Under communication, there's a couple thank you notes there to the Board of Education, and that takes us to board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
I'll keep this short, safety committee meeting that we had. I'm always impressed by the professionalism and how everyone seems to be taking advantage of all the best practices out there, how they're proactively dealing with the, working with police officers, working with the community. I think the relationship that I've seen in the last two meetings has been amazing, how everyone works together and seems to be, every time there's a question that comes up, it's being addressed or in process. And I expect, you know, nothing less, but it's been really amazing to see. On top of that, though, I would say, a special note, and I may have said this when the kids were in the room, is the, the hardest things to fix in life, I gave a speech recently, was things that you don't expect, you rely on all the time. Think toilet paper and COVID, who ever thought that would ever happen? And so, and this topic we had recently, we talked about mental health in the community, and something, I think when we were all kids, you didn't think about mental health, you didn't think about the fabric of resiliency in a community of children, because you didn't have to. So now, today, we're doing that, and so some people come back and they say, mental health crisis. That's not helpful, that's not actionable. And so in those meetings, and then, you know, today, seeing all the stuff that we're trying to do to proactively build the resiliency of the kids is amazing, and I think as we think about our goal of not just graduating them with high, you know, high test scores and, but actually making citizens in the community, I think that's great. So thank you for that, it was a good meeting, and thanks for all your work.
The transportation committee was moved probably three, four, 10 times. We were able to have it today before this meeting. Review for the whole year, obviously been going smoothly. The only thing that we want to reevaluate, or re, you know, tell everybody is between the students, parents, and also the staff, it's important to note to stay out of the bus loop during the AM and PM. Time, times whether it's start of school or end of school. Obviously, we're working on the late starts and everybody getting out at the same time, so that's moving forward. The, the all-clear times, for those that don't know, it's, it's when the buses get all-clear with the students. It's very impressive that by 4:20, all the kids are already at home. Whether that's the bus drivers getting back to the bus barns or not, that's, the kids are at home safe. So very impressive, there's, with our, with our mass area that we cover, for them to get there is impressive. So with the fleet itself, it's important to note that the 23, 24 capital outlay with the two new buses will probably be the propane, again, that's been discussed and approved. Just like the academic calendar for the 23, 24, the transportation outline is also being tentatively planned, so that's out there as well. Other than that, thank you bus drivers, everybody. Snow is still coming. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, it looks like that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.